Monday, October 28, 2024. I feel like we're supposed to do the pledge of allegiance, but maybe not in this one. All right, roll call.
Park?
Here.
Udara?
Here.
Bastido? Absent. Nardini?
Here.
Brennan?
Here.
Erby?
Here.
Deuter?
Here.
Remus? Absent.
Hill?
Here.
Shenko?
Here.
Jensen?
Here.
Bram?
Here.
Cahill?
Here.
Toledo?
Here.
Twelve present, two absent.
Twelve present, two absent. We have a quorum. Clerk Tamers, anyone signed in for public comment this evening?
Yes, Mayor, we have Elizabeth Pavlik, but I believe she's left.
All right. Is there anyone in the audience who did not have the opportunity to sign in for public comment that would like to do so at this committee of the whole meeting? If so, please raise your hand. Seeing none, we'll move right on to the business before the committee. Before I forget, I want to make an announcement that we have been having our voting at City Hall in the large conference room directly across the hall. We selected that site in conjunction with the DuPage Clerk's Office, which we'll call the Election Commission, now merged. We've had some concerns expressed since it started. Clerk Tamers had a number of communications with people who have had concerns. I've received some communications, so has the Election Commission. Clerk Tamers spent a lot of time talking with the Commission. We had the supervisor come out this evening. We are going to shift it back to the council tomorrow morning, so when people come to vote, they will vote in this council chamber. It will change things a little bit for us because we don't want to wait on the Monday night before election, which is traditionally, the day before is a very heavy day. So we will reverse the order of how we do our business. We will have committee of the whole before council meeting, then when they finish with their...
In conference rooms two and three.
Yeah, we'll be in the small room over there for committee of the whole, then when they finish their counting cleanup here, which could be eight, could be 8:30, could be, I hope it's not after 8:30, but we'll come over here and do our council meeting. We were talking about doing it on a Wednesday instead, but there were two or three aldermen who expressed preference not to do that. One alderman could not make it, so it didn't seem like the best way to go. And a lot of the people who normally watch council meetings, members of the public, would expect it to be on a Monday night. So, City Manager will send out a formal communication about that tomorrow, but when we meet next, we will be meeting in opposite order, committee of the whole first, then council. Okay? All right, with that, we'll go on to the business before the committee review of the fiscal year 2025 budget. City Manager, do you want to lead off?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So tonight, we're going to continue with the wireless radio and the ESDA Civil Defense with Chief Dufort, and then we'll move into the Public Works budgets. If you turn to page 2-45, that's where we will start, and I'll turn it back to Chief Dufort.
Thank you. For those of you who are not familiar with the wireless radio program, when a new business comes into town, they're required to install a wireless radio to transmit their fire alarms. It's a network of 600 radios that enhance the ability to transmit fire alarms quickly and efficiently. As the manager said, this is on page 2-45, line item 539999, hopefully not too many nines there, other services. It reflects the $171,310, and that's split up between DuCom, Johnson Controls, and some equipment maintenance that goes along with that. But you will see on that same page, 540020, the radio and radio parts, there's a reduction from this year from $36,750 to $5,750 due to having enough radios in stock, ones that we've reclaimed from buildings that were torn down, to give us enough radios for next year. That's about it.
All right. Questions about what this program is or about the budget? I think we're good, then. City Manager?
Moving right along to ESDA. Our ESDA department continues to be proactive. We strive to anticipate what emergency could happen next. Preparation is a key component of that. Just to remind everybody, 50% of the ESDA Coordinator's salary, benefits, and services are grant-funded through the state. We continue to monitor and maintain our emergency siren system. We've had an increase in maintenance this year at one of our sites, and we're working with the Public Works Department to remedy that situation. If you look at page 2-47, that would be the J form for consultant fees. We increased that line item in case we have issues with the siren power going out, which is the problem that we've been having, or the siren itself that needs to be upgraded. Power may have to bury a line that goes to the siren now. The York High School siren was moved and completed in February of this year. Our ESDA Coordinator, Don Novak, has completed the city's emergency response plan. It's a five-year plan that encompasses different types of emergencies that could affect the city. This year, city staff participated in a simulated cyber attack where each department played a role in mitigating the threat. Once the exercise was complete, an after-action report was created on how best to improve response in the future. The state unfortunately is now requiring, not unfortunately, but they are requiring to do that every three years now. Some of the examples of those are storm-related incidents, rail car incidents, active shooter incidents, major power outages. Next year's exercise will be a unification scenario. This will allow us to maintain our accredited community status, and basically, we use current issues to drive our training in the future. Another thing I just wanted to add lastly is this year, the mobile incident command vehicle was outfitted with monitors and cameras to assist with PD with their drone program for large-scale events, you know, parades, rock the block, that type of stuff.
All right. Questions, Alderman Nardini?
Thank you. Question on the J form. Why, so consultant fee is tripled, and it's to incorporate the possibility of siren repair. A consultant isn't fixing the siren. How does that work?
Basically, it's Fulton, is our company, our consultant, that we use to do maintenance and check on those all the time. We're having a problem with that siren going out on an occasional basis. It was more during the spring and the summer. We had Public Works go out and put a breaker in the system to keep that siren from going out, and we've had some success with that. We're not exactly sure what the problem is, whether it's the line going to the siren or a combination of the buried line and the siren itself. So we wanted to make sure that we had enough money in there in case we do have to bury a line.
And if that ignorance on how the lines are put together, but how is that not, say, equipment maintenance and instead a consultant?
Because, yeah, we've been using Fulton as our, you know, to do all the maintenance repairs on the sirens themselves. If we were to have to run a line, we would possibly do it ourselves or hire a company to come in to bury that line that would go to that siren.
So when I see equipment maintenance, that is not for a contractor doing any equipment? That is...
It could be, yeah, it could be for any type of maintenance.
Got it.
Alderman Hill?
Thank you. You almost stole my question, Alderman, but I think I can follow with that. So if I understood correctly, that's the proposed increase in 2025. So forgive me if you answered this already, but I was trying to listen. Why does it stay up in 2026? The proposed is a little bit more there, so it sounded like it was a one-time exception?
Well, we always try to make sure that we're putting enough money aside to keep up on the sirens. The sirens are, the infrastructure for the sirens is starting to get older. The sirens themselves are relatively new, but we're not anticipating having to replace those, but the infrastructure going to those is what we're worried about.
So this is a new threshold, not just used to replace the sirens?
We're hoping it's just for the infrastructure going to the sirens.
Okay. And then the other question I had, which was, and I didn't think of it until you brought it up, so I didn't look it up yet, I was trying to while Alderman Nardini was asking, but that mobile command unit, when is that scheduled for replacement?
I'd have to look at the cab. It's a while out now, but we put relatively low miles on it, so it's something that we, you know, we would probably keep for a while longer. I can get you, I can get back to you on that.
Maybe just a circle back, I guess.
Definitely.
Yep.
The answer to that would be 2030.
Thank you. That is a quick circle back. Thank you, I really appreciate it.
All right, any other questions on ESDA? All right, I think we're through with ESDA. On to Public Works.
Thank you. Next, we'll bring up Stan Bellicky, Public Works Director. With him today is Assistant Director Corey Tiberi and our City Engineer Ted Cienas to help answer questions for tonight. We'll start on page 2-52.
I know we'll sort of dive into each cost center as we go through the entirety of the Public Works budget. I just thought I'd provide a little bit of an overview, some of the major work activities of Public Works this year, as well as kind of what we look forward to in 2025. And as you know, obviously, a major portion of the Public Works budget is capital expenses, capital maintenance, or capital in terms of new or expanded facilities. The Public Works and Buildings Committee this year conducted, extensively reviewed the capital expenditure budget over the course of three meetings during August and September as part of the kind of lead-up to this budget process. I will say that overall, the Public Works budget for this year is largely a status quo budget in terms of the services that the department is providing, but it is notable that in terms of kind of our cost drivers that we're seeing continuing to go forward in the next year, the price of labor and price of commodities continues to increase or at the very least not go back down to where it was a few years ago. It's, in some cases, kind of holding steady. In 2024, some of the major areas of our focus included the completion of two neighborhood traffic studies. Work continued in that area, also began work in two other neighborhoods, and the dollars are proposed to continue into 2025 with that program. Part of this Public Works budget includes capital expenses for implementation of the bicycle and pedestrian plan, and this past year, we were able to implement some of those improvements along Addison, Cottage Hill, and Spring Road, as well as Poplar and First and St. Charles and Cottage Hill. I'm sure folks have seen the new crossing lights that are out at that location this year. We also, we have our parking garages on a routine maintenance cycle where we go through them once every five years. This year, and actually, this is still an ongoing project, but we're working at the Adelaide Parking Deck this year as part of that program. We were able to resume water main construction, and this year, we had water main installation happen on Route 83 from North Avenue down to Second. That was an area where we had a lot of water main breaks the past several years, and it was also a very difficult area for our staff to work in, so that's an area that's been addressed. The other area that saw water main construction this year was Fellow's Court. So, in addition to that, some of the other major kind of capital work that happened included the completion of a sanitary line replacement on First Street that upsized and relocated the gravity sewer that runs along that street and helped alleviate a bottleneck in the sanitary sewer system with that project. We also completed the Park Avenue Bridge Deck replacement this year. That was kind of the second year of that program to address the bridge deck at First Street and on Park Avenue. We continued work there with respect to the installation of EV chargers this year to help support the city fleet transition to more vehicles that use that. There were chargers that were installed at the Police Department, Public Works, as well as City Hall. The Public Works Fuel Island project was completed this year. That was something that was an aging part of the facility at the Public Works Garage, and that's a project also that's just wrapping up. Certainly notable is the start of the Bundle 5 construction at the wastewater treatment plant. That's a project that's going to last well into 2026 and is north of about a $30 million project for the city, so that's a very substantial upgrade to the treatment plant and part of the multi-year program to prepare for the phosphorus requirements that we have coming down the road. Some of the other things just that were completed this year, we're on the verge of and will be completing the McKinley Stormwater Pump Station upgrade. That's kind of a continuation of a multi-year plan to go through the stormwater pumping stations and do things like upgrade pumps, provide backup power, and provide some uniformity to those pump stations going forward in terms of the type of equipment and facilities that we have for our staff's maintenance of those. A couple things going into next year that will be important for us. We're going to be progressing on the design of the stormwater improvement project at Spring and Eggleston. The last step of the First and Park Avenue Bridge projects that didn't happen this year is the painting of the structure underneath both of those bridge decks. That will happen in 2025. We're also looking at completing the construction of the North York sidewalk improvements from Lake Street to Crestview. Another one that's out there is the reconstruction of Alma from Elm Park to Berkeley. That project is not only going to include a reconstruction of the roadway, but will also be including intersection traffic calming measures as part of that project. And just a few other items of note, kind of from a big-picture perspective, we will start down the road of designing the Bundle 6 improvements at the treatment plant, which is, I'll be a few years off, but that process will start in 2025. Another important part of that is that the facility plan is something that will be updated. That's something that is required by the EPA once every five years, and we're on the cusp of needing to do that, and so that'll kind of go hand-in-hand with the Bundle 6 improvements. A couple things as well that are notable is there is an expense, a new expense in the municipal utility fund this year for some water main and utility relocations on North Avenue. That was something that was kind of brought upon us within kind of fairly short notice by IDOT, and that's related to their corridor improvements along North Avenue with respect to their kind of creation of a smart corridor. And as a part of that, there's, again, there's some water main and our utility relocation that the city will be required to undertake as part of that project. Certainly, this is not an exhaustive list. There are a ton of projects and different maintenance activities that lie within the different portions of the Public Works budget. There's kind of a high-level overview of areas that we'll be focusing on for the coming year. With that, I'd be, we can dive into the first page of the Public Works budget is 2-52. There's, this cost center basically accounts for a lot of general Public Works expenses. There are dollars in there for things, for example, our general engineering account that's used for traffic studies, plan review, and so on. There's a couple things that I would note in this. This is a budget. There's an overall reallocation of some expenses from the motor fuel tax account to the general fund, and that's notable under the 520-300 account for health insurance. You can see there's a big difference, not only because of the MFT, but there's a reallocation due to some better alignment of where staff are budgeted and those benefits are being budgeted alongside where the staff are throughout the city budget. But that's a big variance if you were to look at that from year to year, and that's something that kind of appears in several of the Public Works cost centers in this year's budget. Couple other items of note is we've got a minor equipment in the 540-010 account. There is $6,000 that are budgeted for next year for a new piece of equipment for Public Works. It's basically a vibratory compactor that the staff uses to, when they're filling in excavations, make sure the materials are compacted properly. There's also notable is in 570-100, there is, currently, there's $239,390 there. Those are for hoist replacements at the Public Works Garage. There's been a number of different capital projects that have been happening at the Public Works Garage over the past few years, just as a function of the kind of age of the facility. We're kind of getting close to being complete with those, so those capital dollars represent those hoist replacements in our fleet services area. Okay. Street and alley maintenance, again, noticeable...
I think, because I have a couple of questions here, and I think some others may as well, so let's just do this one page first, and then we'll go on from that, if that's okay?
Sure.
All right. Did you want to jump in, Alderman, Toledo?
You want me to go first?
Yeah, I think you have the same one I do, but go ahead.
Oh, well, we'll see. Okay, so we've been talking at Finance Committee about this switch in the MFT people, but I don't think that that's what you're talking about with this, because I would expect to see salaries and wages go down or somewhere else. Director Quayle knows what I'm talking about, so I don't know if she wants to handle it.
So I can, I'm assuming, feedback. So the health insurance line item is the one you're asking about. So our old accounting system, you may remember, we switched payroll systems this year, being 2024. Our old system could not allocate health insurance to follow the person. Our new accounting system is smarter, and the health insurance expense follows where the person is charged. So before, we were doing allocations based off of percentages, and now our budget is very precise. So it used to be all of Public Works, a majority, was charged in this cost center. So now it is reallocated to where the people are, and that is either in the different divisions or even in the MUF. And there's some realignment, there's realignment across the city. It's just more noticeable in Public Works because people work in different cost centers or they're allocated. A department like Police, they were 100% Police before, they were 100% Police after. You'll notice a few shifts with like city staff, like City Manager Grabowski and myself, where we're allocated between funds. There's a little bit of difference because we have more ability to be accurate. The other shift that Director Bellicky spoke of was the MFT shift, which I can go into if I think that's the right time to do that now, or we can do that later when we get to MFT.
Let's do it when we get to MFT, because I think it'll make more sense to a larger audience. But I do have a second. Thank you for that answer. So we're going to see commensurate increases on health insurance in other sections of the Public Works?
Yes, yes, and there was an increase in health insurance overall, premiums for next year for that as well. So that's the second part of it.
Can I ask my second question? And so the reduction in the building improvements capital outlay, I believe like one of the things that was a big line item in last year or the year before is that Fuel Island? Is that right?
Yes.
So that's one of the things that has been taken care of, and so now we see a pretty sizable decrease in capital outlay line item for this area?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Good, those are both of my questions. Thank you. Continue.
Okay, page 2-53, the street and alley maintenance...
Mr. Mayor, other questions? Sorry, Alderman Nardini?
Thanks. Question about this year's, and I'm guessing this is just how stuff was moved around, but the storm sewer cleaning and then just...
What line are you on?
I'm sorry, I'm on 253 line 531100, 1100, going from $300,000 of our budget down to 50, and I'm guessing it ties into the next page, 570220 and 570230. What am I looking at? What happened from the beginning of the year to what we actually spent with sewer cleaning?
Well, we're going onto that page next.
Fair enough.
So your question may be answered? We'll see.
Got it.
But we'll put it in reserve. All right, go ahead. Alderman, Erby, are you on page 52?
Right, I have one line item I wanted to ask about. So on page two, I get this menu to stop popping up. I'm not on paper, I apologize. On 252, under commodities, we have 541315 vehicle licenses, and I guess I'm, is there a, can you give me a brief rundown? What does that, what does that account for?
So that, most of those costs are to administer the vehicle sticker program. That's where the majority of those go. So that would be the software and the cost to purchase stickers and all of those things for that program.
So is there any payroll in that? Or is that just pure commodity?
No. Pure commodities and contractual services, yes.
For the vehicle sticker program?
Yes.
So they're really not licenses, they're vehicle stickers?
I think in some places, we call them licenses, in some places, we call them stickers, but yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. I mean, technically, it's our local license. They're affectionately known as stickers because they stick to your windshield, but okay, anyone else on this page?
Stick to the window.
All right.
Okay, thank you. 2-53, so this is, this cost center is really the main cost center for all street maintenance activities. There's a couple items that are notable. I'd be happy to address Alderman Nardini's question. The storm sewer cleaning account, the 531100, there were $300,000 that were budgeted in 2024, and it carries forward into the future. Those dollars were predicated on the completion of our Storm Sewer Atlas, so basically, the map of our storm sewer system. The reason why that's important is that when, whether it's a contractor or whether it's our own staff and they go out in the field to perform that work, we want to make sure that their activities are tied to those assets in our asset management program and our GIS. So we have been working with a consultant over the past year to complete that Storm Sewer Atlas project. There were issues why that ran long into 2024, so we're at a point where I expect us to be able to proceed with those storm sewer cleaning activities that are in that line item in 2025. That's anticipated to be an annual maintenance program that goes through a portion of the city every year, but it's really, it was really predicated on having that GIS and that asset management data in place before proceeding. So that is the reason that you see that variation in that number. So that is the reason that you see that variation in that number.
Follow-up, Alderman Nardini, or?
I don't.
All right. Director, is that the end of your presentation on that page?
There's, well, I will say, I'd like to just touch on for that cost center, there is a fairly large account that's in there in the capital outlay account. It's the 570140 account. And for 2025, that line item budget is proposed to be $5,421,000. I know in the past, the council has kind of asked what's in that number. And so I can sort of provide a little bit of a, just a background of what that, how that, we get to that. For 2025, our annual, we call it contract paving, call it roadway resurfacing, that program is $4,520,000 going into next year. There is $621,000 that is proposed for residential concrete street resurfacing. There's $135,000 that's proposed for parking lot maintenance and resurfacing. There's $64,000 that is proposed for continuing engineering at the Monroe and Riverside intersection for that project. And then there is $81,400 for engineering for the Northwest Elmhurst roadway reconstruction project. So those dollars should add up to the $5,421,000. A few just other notable expenses on the capital side. In account 570330 for mobile equipment, we have the replacement of a trailer for Public Works, as well as in the 570600 account, there's $208,000 that are there for the replacement of two Public Works vehicles. With respect to the J-forms that reference that cost center, there are increases for asphalt patching. And that is an additional funding amount of $15,000 that addresses some of the streets where we need to continue with patching of the roadway and maintain that pavement surface until we're able to get into certain areas with water main improvements. There's an additional $5,000 under pavement striping for that work, and that is in anticipation of some increased maintenance of some of the bicycle and pedestrian plant striping. Under sidewalk curb and gutter repair, there's also, there's a proposed increase of $30,000, essentially to maintain the same, kind of the same output from that program, but essentially to keep up with cost increases in the market that we're seeing. And then under signs, post, and paint, there's a proposal for another $7,000 to include the purchase of signs and materials to help support some of the outcomes of the neighborhood traffic study work. It's also notable with the roadway improvements line item, because there's a J-form for that also, is that since 2021, we've seen the unit prices for asphalt on these projects increase by approximately 30%. The proposed budget does not increase that by the same amount, but there is a proposed increase of just under $400,000, and the, that amounts to approximately a 15% increase in that program. Again, essentially with the idea of keeping pace with what we're able to accomplish in that work.
Alderman Brennan.
Thank you. So I'm back on page 254. And it's along the same lines as the J-form comment that you just made. So this year, it looks like we're grossly going to not spend all the money. So did we run out of product? I mean, what, we budgeted $5 million, and we're roughly at 3.6 million as far as our estimated.
I'm going to ask our city engineer, Ted Cyanis, if he can help me with this one.
Okay.
Do we have overspent in prior?
You need to use the microphone, just for the people who'll be watching on video. Thank you.
We had overspent in prior years in 2022 and 2023. So a portion of '24 was to accommodate some of the overages in prior years.
But I guess to the point that prices are going up, I'm surprised that we wouldn't have spent 2024 budget entirely.
Yeah, I believe there was also snafu with our committee report to where the budget amount that we set forth for in '24 was reduced based on how we phrased some of the wording. So we came up to pave as much as we could based upon what we had done in prior years and also what we reported we were going to spend when we bid the project.
Okay, all right.
I'm not sure that, you might want to look at that again, because it, I think what, I'm not going to speak for you, Alderman Brennan, but I'll supplement it. It's like, I'm looking at it, I thought it was a different answer. You know, we budgeted $5 million, we only spent 36, 3.6 million. So that doesn't really, I don't think that really explains it.
Yeah, my intent's not to put anybody on the spot. If we could just add that to the circle back, I'd appreciate it. Thank you. And the line of questions around, with costs going up so dramatically, you know, I would rather have seen us spend those dollars this year and get more, you know, for those dollars. So thank you.
Alderman Bram.
Thank you. I would like to start on 253, please. And I'm just going to speak to two line items at once, because they tie in together, in my mind at least. And that's 531050 asphalt patching, and then 531060 concrete street patching. I did notate the J-form. I believe there's a J-form on the asphalt patching that we were just talking about minutes ago, in regards to increased cost and therefore the additional $15,000 from one budget year to the next. And that makes sense to me. My question would be in regards to concrete street patching. I would think if asphalt's going up, so is concrete, and really, there's a lot less, well, $10,000 less. It's only an incremental from $175,000 to $180,000 increase from last year. Is there any reasoning for that? Or are we doing the same amount of patching for both programs? Or there's no cost increase in concrete, and there's only cost increase in asphalt?
I'm going to ask Assistant Director Tiberi to help on the answer to that one.
So asphalt patching and concrete patching had increases, well, actually, asphalt patching, we kept the same, even though material costs have gone up. We've done more patching in-house, so we've been able to maintain the level of patching that we need to do from asphalt. For the concrete patching, we actually increased that by 30% in 2024. It went up by $40,000. And we also added $50,000 in the MUF budget for iDOT patches in 2024 as well. So we did increase it substantially last year. Then this year, the $5,000 that we added in the concrete patching is just to do additional sidewalk quantities, because we're always doing more sidewalk in our concrete patching program.
Thank you. I just want to revisit briefly on page 254, Alderman Brennan's line item of 570140 roadway And I do know that this is just a total of the various projects that Director Bellicky has already mentioned, being contract paving for the asphalt streets, concrete for the concrete streets parking lot, and the other two projects. I would like to make a circle back on this, on just looking at fund distribution in this category versus where it stands today. I guess I'm probably a little bit of a broken record, but in, in past history, this last two years, we had no funding for resurfacing of the concrete streets. And if you look from what was budgeted in 2022 of 540,000 and jumping all the way to what we're budgeting today, our proposed budget for today in 2025, it's an increase over a three-year period of 15%. When we're talking about the asphalt resurfacing, you're seeing close to, my calculations, is a 14.4% increase from the previous budget year of 2024 to 2025. I get it in regards to the decisions that were made previously, in regards to not resurfacing for two straight years. I don't necessarily agree with it, but I understand that the choices that was, were made for those two years. But to only see, to me, a 15% increase over a three-year period, I think that's worth revisiting. So I know it's already a circle back, but I'm doing, I'm making a request for a circle back from a different perspective in the, just the allocation of funds of the various programs that are under that line item.
Do you understand what is being asked? All right. So we have two circle backs on one line. City manager, you have a, your city engineer, we.
If I may speak.
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, so regarding Alderman Brennan's question about the paving, so that's, that $5 million number is broken into six different groupings. Of that, $3,950,000 is contract paving. $80,000 is inlet cleaning. $67,000 would be parking lots. $235,000 was for Monroe Riverside intersection. $50,000 was for Alma, and $418,000 was for Villa Avenue project.
Can you, like, for the circle back, just write that out? Because those are the 2024 numbers you're saying, not, because you gave us the 2025 already.
Right. That's the 2024 numbers. The question was, why wasn't, why didn't we spend all of what was in 2024? And so I think city engineer might have a reason for that. I just wanted to kind of break it down for the council so they understand. It's not all, the $5 million is not all contract paving.
And so the Villa Avenue portion of that is roughly $418,000, and that is a project, a joint project with Villa Park. They are leading the project, and it did not move forward this year as was previously planned. So a large portion of that, roughly $418,000, did not, was not incurred in 2024 because that project has not begun yet. And additionally, we're working with Villa Park and Monroe Riverside intersection. So a portion of, a large portion of that engineering didn't occur this year either as we pursue an intergovernmental agreement with them to add their portion on the west side of 83.
All right, that, does it answer your question, Alderman Brennan, or do you want to maintain the circle back?
It does. It's just not spelled out very well in the J-form. I think that, I get the point. It was no, you know, resurfacing improvements, so, but there's still.
No, there were resurfacing, but like the Villa Park project was a joint project, and they had the lead on it, and they didn't get it done, so we didn't spend the money because they didn't move it forward. But that would have been resurfacing of the.
Correct. Well, I think that's more than resurfacing. How about for the circle back, we just break that down as requested, and what was spent out of each one?
Yeah. And then, you know, according to the J-form, it doesn't look like that's being pulled forward into 2025, so.
We'll break that down in the circle back memo.
Thank you.
Very good. All right. Additional comments or questions on this item? City Treasurer.
You know, I know we said we were going to come back to the MFT transfer on this first line for salaries. Would it, is it helpful? I mean, my mind works, it would be helpful if there was like a J-form explaining that on this one. I don't, I don't know if that's somewhere else, but that, just a thought, that's how my mind would work.
Why don't we cover it when we get to the MFT and see if that answers everyone?
I, I don't think it's like, like written for the public, I guess, because it's not on the MFT. There's nothing written on the MFT either about the, I don't think about the transition over here. But if I was like a member of the public and I was looking at this, I would, it would be helpful if there was like a J-form.
Mayor.
Alderman Tulludo.
I would second that. I think it would be helpful for everybody, including members of the public, because we're, you're going to see a decrease in one, and you're going to see an increase in the other, and connecting those dots is, would be helpful for everybody.
I agree, and I guess it would have to be at both places.
Yeah, that's why I think it's probably hard for staff to have put like a J-form per se, so I don't, you know, the circle back process might be helpful, because then they can kind of combine the two pieces of disparate information into one place and explain it. It's coming out of this, it's going into that, kind of thing.
All right.
We'll add that to the circle back list.
Very good. All right, anyone else on this particular item? All right, city manager?
This cost center is basically accounts for overtime expenses that are directly attributable to our snow removal program. I guess I would note in here, under commodities, you see the line item for salt is relatively small, and that's because a bulk of that commodity is accounted for in the MFT fund. I know there's a lot of talk about MFT tonight, but that's, that's the reason why you don't see it here. The other thing that I would note, we've got a J-form under the sand chloride and abrasives account. It's the 541245 for another $10,000. We have gotten to a point where we have vehicles that are equipped to pre-wet the salt. And what that essentially means is that the, our trucks not only carry the road salt, but they carry this deicing liquid as well. The deicing liquid is applied to the salt at the spinner on the truck before it's applied to the street, and it helps make the salt effective at lower temperatures, typically below 20 degrees Fahrenheit is when it's necessary, because salt becomes ineffective at lower temperatures all by itself. So we're at a point where we have that capability with our fleet, and we anticipating that our chloride use may increase with that ability. So that is that J-form. The other thing, it's not in the 2025 proposed budget, but just notable under capital outlay, the 570330 account for 2026, there's $157,000 there. And that is for the planned replacement of our loader-mounted snow blower. That's something that is really useful when, in getting into having to remove larger snowfalls from the downtown area. It allows us to use a front-end loader to, we essentially.
God bless you.
Create a windrow, and that, that piece of equipment allows us to load semi-trucks as we go down the street and get that snow out of the downtown area. So that's coming up in 2026.
Thank you. City manager?
Of course, we'll answer questions about that, but I wanted to bring to the council's attention, I meant to previously, on 2-54, under street and alley maintenance. You'd see under line item 570600 vehicles, there's an amount proposed of 208,000, and that is in the J-form online, but it. is in the J form online, but it got cut off when we printed these sheets. So sorry, that kind of fell out of the print area apparently. But we have corrected it for the online budget so it would show two vehicles that are being proposed to be replaced.
All right, back to the council on snow removal. Okay, very good. Let's move on to forestry.
Page 2-59 and 60 covers our forestry activities. I think probably most people know we have a pretty extensive inventory of public parkway trees to the tune of about 22,000 that we, the city, own and maintain every year. And this is where we account for those expenses in with respect to that maintenance. There are a couple of items in here that are worth noting based on the J forms. Account number 531135 for landscape maintenance, there's a proposed increase of $22,000 in that account. One of the big expenses that's in there is our mowing contract, and we're at a point where we'll have to rebid that contract going into 2025. We've been fortunate with the pricing that we've had, but we do anticipate that there's going to be an increase in that work for for this coming year. The other item that I would just like to highlight is the 570800 account, which is other equipment. There's $60,000 that is proposed there to be spent on a soil separator. Not a not a huge amount of money, but it's it's an operational improvement that I think we're pretty excited about. Our forestry staff has done the research on this, and this is a piece of equipment. It's it's got increasingly challenging to actually to purchase topsoil for the purposes that we need, as well as some of the disposal of of spoils from our excavation sites. And so what this piece of equipment is going to allow us to do is basically recycle some of the spoils when we complete an excavation for for a project that we're working on and basically separate out the topsoil so that we can reuse it instead of basically paying to haul it all away and then paying to haul topsoil back in. We kind of based on the analysis that we conducted on this, we anticipate that two things, we're expecting about a 20-year life for this piece of equipment, and we think that based on the expense that is there to purchase it, that it'll pay for itself in about seven to eight years. So again, it's not like we're talking about millions of dollars, but I think it's it's always kind of nice to see these kind of operational improvements that help us make a little more efficient use of of what we already have. And so we're not kind of paying to haul things away and then hauling them back in in another form. So those are the two J forms for that for that cost center. The other, I guess, item that's notable, again, just in this cost center under tree planting, the 531140 account. We typically plant anywhere from four to 500 trees, generally speaking, on a typical year. That 105,000 is a portion of that expense. The other portion of that expense is again located in our in our MFT fund. So it's split between general fund and MFT.
All right, questions? Alderman Herbie.
Thank you, Mayor. You said that piece of equipment was going to kind of internalize our topsoil. So would we want to keep our topsoil budget the same through the year? Or are we planning on a reduction? If I invest X number of dollars on capex on that piece of equipment, do I get a on that payback of seven to eight, nine years? Wouldn't that be in the topsoil line item? Or is there some other savings that I'm not aware of?
I think we'll see the savings, and I don't necessarily think we're going to see it in 2025, but we will see savings in topsoil as well as in the haul out basically of the spoils from excavations. I would say just keep in mind that the fact that these dollars, assuming they're approved, are provided in 2025, they give us the ability to move ahead with that equipment purchase. And we're still with almost every single equipment purchase that we have seeing very long lead times. So let's say we get started early next year, we may not see this. I don't have, you know, can't tell you for sure, but we may not see it for six months or nine months. I don't know how long it's going to take us to actually receive it next year. So I don't think that we're kind of preemptively making a lot of reductions in those other account line items immediately, but I would anticipate then as we go forward and we own this, that's that's where the payback will be.
Okay. And a final answer or a question would be, we have our total budget in forestry and we support 22,000 trees, you said, on the on the public property. So that's about $114 a tree. Do we benchmark ourselves on that? Is there any way you can say, all right, well, that town does this? Or what is it? What is the number that we should be shooting for? Maybe we're below budget per tree? You know, I love my trees and I know we need more trees. So can you just talk a little bit about that? Way we can get those, you know, where we are on that per-tree basis?
Sure. I don't know that we've gone through the exercise of benchmarking sort of a per-tree program cost to to do what we do. The one thing I will say is in terms of the, I guess, the planting and the pruning activities and the removal activities, those are pretty standard and pretty consistent from community to community. I think what we do here is we provide forestry services at a pretty high level. You know, we not only we love the trees that we have and we want to take care of them and we want to plant more as as we lose some of the ones that that get old and die, which is our life. But we also recognize that we have the fact that we own those public parkway trees, we also have a liability in that ownership of those. And so the maintenance, when I say maintenance in terms of, you know, responding to concerns or requests in terms of, you know, the health of a tree or just through our own survey work that we, you know, what we see out in the field, we want to make sure that we can respond to those things quickly because there is a potential consequence if we don't. So it's not only the response to those things, but but even the kind of how we do the cyclical pruning, we prune all of our parkway trees once every seven years. One of the things that I've seen over time is that kind of the more frequent pruning oftentimes yields less storm damage. So when we have these big windstorms come through the city, the fact that we're able to go through the whole community on that periodic basis, it means that when those storms happen, we generally have less damage, less storm damage to deal with, which is certainly good for the community. It's good from the kind of the resilience standpoint, being resilient to, you know, resilient to weather events, but also then from the kind of those big, potentially big storm damage expenses coming all at once, we're we're kind of staying on top of of those things a little bit at a time every year. So I know it's a long answer, but it's I think the cost is important, but also the outcome that we're seeing. And I can I can just say that from what I know of our forestry program, it definitely is very high level of service and is consistent with those that are really, I think, considered some of the best in the area. So.
Thank you.
Other discussion? Alderman Brennan.
Thank you. So I'm on 259. 570600 vehicles. So there's no budget item. That's fine. But but I was just curious what we purchased for a million 25, and I went back to to last year's budget, and we budgeted $870,000. And I think some of the complexity is here is the lead time for these vehicles, when we get them, et cetera, et cetera. So it looks like the the J form for last year, it says increase for six new trucks and and two truck purchases that were budgeted in 2023 but held until 2024. I guess what I'm just trying to get an appreciation of is the accounting for these new vehicles, the timing when we get them, et cetera. But it just caused me to to pause a little bit that that we have an estimated budget item at a million 25, but our our budget was 870. And again, we can put that on a circle back, but just trying to understand, you know, the pattern that we're seeing. It'd be nice if we budgeted something, could place the order, we get the the vehicle or whatever. I know that's not reality, but maybe it's a broader question than, you know, I think Alderman Toledo, you know, had had something on fire trucks. Maybe it's just maybe we should expand the the scope of vehicles in general. I mean, you know, we aren't spending any this year, but in this particular forestry category or area of the budget. But I think at an aggregate, it's probably a pretty big number in our budget. I'd be curious what outlay for vehicles, you know, across all departments would look like this year and and propose 2026. Is that in here?
We have a we could circle back on this one because if I remember, there was a problem getting the trucks.
Yeah, so, you know, the pandemic threw the proverbial wrench into all of that as you you all know from approvals that we've gone through at committee and at council. So we're we're catching up from that when we can. And and something I was going to comment when Alderman Toledo was asking about fire trucks is, of course, we try to push our vehicles as long as we can if we don't have to replace them. This the schedule that you see in the cab, starting on page cab 100, the very last pages of the cab, that's an ideal schedule for our our fleet services division, right? If our supervisor had it his way, this is exactly how it would go. Then the city manager becomes involved and says, gee, can't we push that another year? Can't we push that another year? And that has repercussions to vehicles stacking up, as Alderman Toledo pointed to last week. So we we try to plan it out accordingly. It's obviously it's fluid every year as to what gets pushed out, what gets bunched up, what can be held over one more year, what might get refurbished, so on and so forth. So if there's something more that you want than what this schedule lays out, we're happy to accommodate that.
I don't think so. I don't need to circle back on that. I may have questions after I review this more, but.
Director Coyle wanted me to point out that the code on the far right side of that table is the account numbers for.
Goes back to them?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Alderman Bram.
Thank you. Couple of questions on trees and one in regards to the topic that Alderman Brennan just brought up. Could the differential of the budget from last year showing the 870,000 plus that Alderman Brennan stated and the one-plus million showing for last year's budget, is that possibly carryover from last year? And that's why you see that increase? I'm seeing that up and downs, yes? Okay. So the it's not really an increase. It's unspent funds from the previous year that was moved into the budget or?
Yes, so there was a vehicle PW119 that was $155,000 that was carried over from 2023 into 2024. So that's the difference between those two.
Okay. That definitely helps me because Alderman Brennan's question was a good one. I just wanted to make sure I got some clarity on that as well. This is always a good time, at least for me, in regards to Dutch elm disease trees. Where are we at with how many are in the public right of ways and how many more do we need to deal with?
Sure, I can answer that. So we do keep track of that every year. We are down to remaining elm trees of 1,091 in our inventory. That's in the public right of way. What we see, it's interesting in terms of kind of our public, the Dutch elm disease removals that we see every year. For the past, let's say, three years, we're looking at roughly a couple dozen per year. There's no real, you know, if you were to go back maybe 20 years, there were some real big spikes, big years of of removing hundreds at a time. And like last year, pardon me, this we we track in-house and contract removals separately. So bear with my my math was off there, but last year we had or this year, we had 46. The year before, it was in the 30s. Year before that, it was in the 30s. So it's it's kind of hovering in that same number year to year. But but overall, our our inventory is just a little bit more than 1,000 of those 22,000 parkway trees.
Great, thank you. The only other question, and this isn't really a tree question, this might be Director Coyle question. We just mentioned in regards to or Director Bulicki just mentioned in regards to the trees allocation being split between MFT and the general. It looks like when I look at the MFT section that it started approximately in 2023. We heard tonight in regards to trying to offload the MFT spend and bringing it back into the general fund. Is this has this area been considered? I know it's only 75,000-ish, but bring it all back into the general fund versus the MFT?
I think it might be helpful to wait till you get to the MFT because it looks it will answer the MFT explanation, and then if not, you could I would follow up then.
Is that okay?
Yeah, that's fine. All right. More on forestry. Can you see forestry through them? All right. All right. On to electrical.
Okay, electrical, pages 2-61 and 62. This area accounts for the expenses that are involved in ownership and maintenance of our streetlight system. We've got about 6,700 streetlights. We have 25 traffic signals that we maintain, so all of those costs from electrical fall You see, there were a couple of things that I wanted to note. There's two two J forms in this account. One is under other services, the 539999 account. There's additional funds that are proposed in this for the Meister Avenue Streetlight Relocation Project, which is an increase of $90,000 in that account. That is a project that is is in the cab, and there's there's further information of it in there. But that project is really kind of seeking to improve accessibility in that area with a small stretch of public sidewalk that's right along the railroad right of way. And it also kind of involves kind of relocating some streetlights in that area as well. I think the this may be to double check, this may be the streetlight cost in particular that's associated with that project. The other J form that's in there is for account 57180 for traffic signals. There's an amount of $666,000 there, and that is for. There's an amount of $666,000 there, and that is for railroad interconnect improvements at St. Charles and Berkeley. This is a project that is funded through a grant from the ICC, and it will involve new controllers, cabinets, uninterrupted power supplies at that location. There's some other safety improvements with its, obviously, its connection with the railroad crossing gates at that location in terms of signage and other things that will kind of bring it up to a modern standard.
Director, on the salary line, are we going to be talking about under the MFT as well? Yes, okay. All right. Questions on electrical? Alderman Hill.
Thank you, Mayor. So Director, if you could just give me a sign here, this traffic signal thing that you said is an improvement at St. Charles and Berkeley, is that's a multi-year project? I see a proposed amount in the subsequent year.
There, I think, let's take a quick look. I think that the reason that goes out into future years is that the, there is a second component to that for the same kind of work to happen at Addison and First at that intersection, and I think that's what that is.
If that's reflected in the kids, sorry, I can connect it back to that if you happen to see it. But it doesn't have to be, I can go offline with that. Yeah. Thanks, Director, I appreciate it.
There are dollars that go out into 2026 for the first and Addison.
Okay, thank you.
Portion of that.
Alderman Ardini.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On the same line, talk to me about this year and why we didn't spend what we had budgeted at 570180 traffic signals.
I think this may be related to the timing of those two same projects, but I may ask, yeah, it's, they were, it was, it's related to the timing of those projects.
That's Addison and First, and what's the other?
St. Charles and Berkeley. And the thought was that those would start this year, but they have not.
Other discussion on electrical. Alderman Erby.
Thank you, Mayor. When you look at electrical 6064 under the general fund on page in total, in its totality on 261, it seems like we're mixing two different bags here of sources of money. You've got streetlights, and you have traffic signals, but we have it all in one budget line item. Is there a way to know, like of this 2,893.5, how much is traffic and how much is streetlight? Or you really can't separate those out? If that question makes any sense.
I would say certain line items you could, but certainly, like the staff, the salary costs, they work on both. It's just the electrical staff that works on those. So certainly for ones that are traffic signal parts, which is the 295, you know, that's traffic signals. For some of them, you know, they are.
Comingled.
Comingled, yes. But it's, we think of it more as the electrical division that oversees both parts, both of those things, and that's why they're in one division.
So do you think, I guess in that follow-up question, but do you think that number is majority traffic signals, or is it more streetlights? Or is it a, I mean, how would you, if you were just going to give it a rough ballpark, how would you, how would you characterize the 2.893?
I guess I'd say, let Sand chime in too, but I think it just depends on the different projects that have taken place. Like, we've done a lot of retrofitting the lights for LED and those types of projects. In some years, it shifts more towards the traffic signal, so I don't think, I think it just depends on the year and what the needs are for like the more major dollar value projects.
Well, we have far more streetlights than we do traffic signals.
It's at $480-something dollars a year per device. Take that budget divided by 6,700 traffic, I mean, traffic lights or devices, you get a cost per device, total cost. So I'm trying to figure out, do traffic signals cost a lot to run? Or is it just, because I don't think my traffic, or my streetlight, we spend $480 a year on. We might spend $5 a year on, because I don't think we even pay electricity. So we basically spend almost zero until we've replaced all those LED upgrades, but you get my point here, I'm just trying to fare out the apples from the oranges.
I think one thing that is a little maybe difficult to interpret, when, if you were to take sort of that bottom line number and divide it by the number of streetlights, or the number of trees that we have, the staff cost that's in all these programs is a fairly substantial portion of each one of them. And they're really, they're divided, obviously, by kind of where they're working in the department. But I would say also, keep in mind that those staff are not solely working on just electrical or just forestry. So for example, they're plowing snow. And so even though we account for snow overtime in a separate cost center, if they're plowing snow during their regular shift, those dollars are accounted for in each of these cost centers. So then there's, there may be other things like that, too, where there's, their activities are for the overall sort of general good of the department and the city, even though primarily they're accounted for in a certain area, because that's generally speaking their focus. But it would make it, I don't know that you could sort of do that simple math of just dividing the total cost by the number of whatever we have, just because staff is such a big part of each of those areas, and they may be working in other kind of parts of the operation.
Right. So the way you describe snow removal, that would mean snow removal is, actually costs less, we're showing less cost than it actually is. If, if we've got 40 people in the streets during regular business, their regular hours on their shift, that payroll dollar is not reflected in the snow removal, if I understood your description or your explanation of that.
Correct, yes.
All right, thank you.
Just to be clear, the snow removal line is only overtime?
Yes.
And moreover, the electrical costs, you know, you can't divide it up, because, you know, out of this, it's really the 961,000, because there's capital and, all right. Other discussion on electrical. All right. Onto rubbish disposal.
This is the cost center that's used to account for the expenses related to the republic service at this point, municipal solid waste contract. Just notable in the two J forms, these account for a 3% increase in those, in that contract from 2024 to 25.
All right. Discussion on rubbish disposal. Alderman Bram.
Thank you. More of a comment, I mean, I just want to highlight especially to the public, the dollar amount is close to $4 million for refuse recycling. I believe probably composting is part of this contract, et cetera. So it's a very, very large dollar amount, and I just want everybody to know, I think back when I first was elected, it was probably a little bit under 2 million, and a couple decades later, it's doubled to $4 million. So it's a huge line item that we just, I personally look at very closely, but that's all.
All right. Other discussion on rubbish disposal. Move on then. Municipal bridges.
2-65.
Buildings, not bridges. Municipal buildings.
A couple items that are notable, this, so this is, this is our group that is responsible for maintaining our public, public buildings, and this is where we account for those costs. This includes everything from City Hall, police station, fire stations, public works garage. And so a couple notable items in here, there are some commodity increases that are anticipated in natural gas. That line item, the 530150, increasing from 45 to $48,000 for next year. The other item, the 530185, the cost of water. The city began charging itself for water usage in 2023, so 2024 was kind of an estimate in terms of what that was going to be. And the 2025 proposed budget is a kind of a better indication of what those costs are going to be. That's an increase of 18,500 for next year to a total of 38,500. The last item, the 539999 under Other Services, this is kind of a splitting of some expenses that previously were all accounted for in the 531190 account under building maintenance. This account is going to be used to separately track all basically contracted services, everything from pest control, fire alarm and sprinkler service, overhead door repair. It's kind of a move of those budget dollars from the building maintenance account. Within the capital outlay expenses for 2025, there's $168,000 in that account, and those, that amount includes the City Hall elevator project, as well as continuation of some of the carpet replacement throughout the building.
All right. Discussion on municipal buildings. Move on to central maintenance equipment.
Central equipment replacement, this is our fleet maintenance group. They, they do a fantastic job for, for our fleet. We've got approximately, right now, we've got 191 of our own vehicles that we maintain. We also work under an intergovernmental agreement to maintain the vehicles of the Elmhurst Park District. And there are four J forms that are provided as part of the central equipment maintenance budget for, for this year. The first one is the 531195 for contracted repairs. This is an area where, again, this is reflective of increased labor costs in the market. There's no, I guess, this isn't a proposal to sort of do more or something different than what we're doing, it's really being able to complete the repairs that are necessary on the fleet, and it's just that the costs for those are escalating. Under the 536105 account, there's an increase in auto insurance to the tune of about $3,500. And again, under parts and materials, the 541320 account, there's a proposed increase of $35,000, and this is reflective of the continuing increased costs that we're seeing in parts and materials. The last item, the 5570330 account, is accounting for the replacement of PW 129, which is a 2013 forklift in the fleet.
Okay, good. All right. All right, so I'll save my question to the end. Anyone, Alderman Brennan?
So I think years ago, Director Bulicki, did this group do the fire, maintenance on the fire trucks as well?
Yes.
And they don't any longer? Is that correct?
Well, yeah, no, we do. We're responsible for maintenance of the fire fleet. It's changed a little bit, our method in how that happens has changed a little bit over the years. And so we are relying more on outside services for maintenance of the fire fleet. There are still some things that we do, and we try to kind of keep things rolling, but there was a position that was essentially, I'll say, like a fire mechanic position that used to be part of the staffing plan, and when that person left, that position was not replaced, and the idea was to lean on more outside services for that work.
I think that's what I was remembering. So does our equipment or facilities, I mean, these are, we have a lot of big vehicles. So is our facilities themselves, are they equipped to where if we did have the personnel that we could work on these?
We can, we can work on any vehicle that's in our fleet, from, from small to large. Got it.
Thank you.
Just, I was trying to look it up, the land acquisition, what was, was that the house on Aglestone?
Those are the two houses on Aglestone. A portion of that went to the Stormwater Fund, and the remainder is accounted for here.
Other discussion. Alderman Erby.
Quick one on page 267, and I'm having a deja vu moment again. 541315, vehicle licenses, 3,000. Are we back to stickers again? Or is this something different?
That is actually the cost of putting plates on cars' licenses.
The actual real licenses, okay, just checking.
You don't think ours are real?
Well, last time that was, those were stickers on a license, on a windshield related to a license.
All right. Right. All right, let's move on then to our capital projects.
So as Mayor just pointed out, the first one in that is the property land acquisition, which was the two properties on Aglestone that we were able to purchase. Point out in 2025, the sidewalk improvements, which if you look at the J form on the next page, that is funding for the sidewalks on Indiana and Van Aken. And we're happy to answer any questions.
Sorry, jumped ahead. Alderman-Toluto.
Thank you. The land acquisition, why would that not be funded by the Stormwater Fund?
So what was paid for out of the Stormwater Fund, we received two grants from DCEO to fund a portion of those properties. So $600,000 of those went to the Stormwater Fund, and then the remainder went to the general fund. I think the thought was just to split the cost, because it was dual use.
Oh, because we're going to put a parking lot in part of it?
Correct.
Thank you.
Good question here. Alderman Bram? Same page, obviously, 570160. What are the street improvements?
The street, let me take a stab at that one. The street improvements of the 274620, we have two items. We have the Route 83 bicycle and pedestrian bridge design. Of that, so there's, within that 274, that represents $162,500, and of that one. dollars. And of that one sixty-two, a hundred and forty-one thousand nine hundred is grant-funded. So the, the full expense is shown there, but, but so just know that one forty, essentially one forty-two of the one sixty-two is grant-funded for the bike and ped bridge. And then there is a hundred and twelve thousand one hundred and twenty dollars for the design of kind of the next phase of bicycle and pedestrian plan projects.
Thank you. So I don't know logistically how to go about this because it's, seems like it might be across multiple accounts. If I wanted to make a circle back on the bike and ped plan, would this be the account number to do it? Okay, could I make that a circle back, please?
All right. On to the motor fuel tax fund. Page 317.
Mayor, if I may, it might make more sense to prepare the analysis that Alderman Toledo and Treasurer Curran had asked for. And if we could move MFT to the next meeting with that, I think that would be very helpful for everyone.
We discussed this at finance this evening, and it's a little complex and substantive. So we'll skip over the MFT and come back on that stormwater fund, 525.
Do you want me to address the, a couple items I can address in this, on the, on the capital outlay side. There are a few notable projects that are accounted for in this cost center. The, the one J form that's noted for eight hundred and seventy-three thousand, this is a proposal for repairs to the Yorkfield Detention Basin wall, as well as design of improvements in North Grawie Woods and the Spring and Aglestone area. So there are, there are essentially, there's three major-
Sorry, Director Bellicky, where are we?
It is, I'm sorry, it's page 5-27.
Under the capital projects tab in your binder.
That's where the J form is.
So in, in that, in that eight hundred and seventy-three thousand, there are those, those three, work on those three major projects that's included in that number. I want to say the, the design of the North Grawie Woods Stormwater Improvements, that's under CEB 77. The design is a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars. The design for the Spring and Aglestone Stormwater Project is CEB 78. That's two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. And then the Yorkfield Detention Basin is the balance in that account. And then the other, the other one I would call attention to is the following account, the 57230 Storm Stations. There is five hundred thousand dollars that is proposed in that account for 2025. That's CEB Sheet 81. That is going to support the design of the rehabilitation of the Berkeley and Adams Station. And that is a station that's a combined storm and, and sanitary station. And so that, those funds will be used towards the design of that project.
Alderman Toledo?
Yeah, I just am curious, you know, we, about the Yorkfield Detention Basin repairs. That was, project was not completed all that long ago. So I, not on public works, so I'm just curious kind of what's going on there.
Seventy-three. Bear with me just a moment.
Getting us closer to ten, Stan, so thank you.
This is also for the Aglestone project, right?
Yeah, I, yeah. That's not all of the eight seventy-three, but that's the part that I'm curious about.
So when the, basically what's kind of outlined in the, in the CEB sheet is that this is involving repairs to the existing sheet pile. So in 2016, 2017, the city expanded the existing detention basin at Yorkfield Estates. The expansion was made possible by the installation of sheet pile retaining walls and excavation of existing earth materials. The, the walls that are there are beginning to lean into the basin in two spots because of the lateral pressure against the wall from the existing soil, which staff believes this is made worse by some of the really heavy rains that we had back in the May time period in 2018, nineteen, and twenty. And so these repairs, this, this project is three hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And it's to address essentially the, these failing sheet pile walls.
And follow up, please?
Yes.
So the, am I correct in thinking that this is the one down by those condos, Timothy Christian, kind of in between those two, south of Butterfield? No?
No.
This neighborhood is east of York?
We have a detention basin over there?
We do. It's a, it's a narrow, very narrow one that goes along Harrison, I believe, right?
When was it built?
Original part, according to Assistant Director, was a long time ago.
So this was before the Christopher Burke engineering? This was something done prior to a lot of that work?
Twenty to twenty-five years ago at least.
Oh, okay. So, because I was going to say, you know, like, can we go back to the, whoever designed it? Like, you know, so this is not, this is more like kind of a long-term thing. If it was done like five years ago and we're already repairing it, I would be saying, why aren't we not asking the design engineer to, you know, I don't know, stand up to their work quality? Okay, thank you.
Alderman Erby?
Follow up on Alderman Toledo's question as well is, is that repair and maintenance on that storm sewer, or all these storm sewers in general? We have to, the way I understand we do our water rate study, we put storm water repair and maintenance into the municipal utility, utility fund, if I could talk, rate structure, but not capex. You know, that goes to the, where we did an HRST, Home Real Sales Tax. Is that a correct assumption?
So the, the MUF Fund does not have stormwater projects. And the maintenance projects are in the 6061, the street maintenance. A lot of those items are there that are kind of the ongoing regular cleaning programs. The stormwater fund is just major capital projects associated with the stormwater system. So not maintenance activities, but the more major rehabilitations.
So no water rate study impact?
No, it did not.
All right, I got confused. Thank you.
Of course.
Anyone else? All right, we'll go on to the Municipal Utility Fund on 4-2.
So the, it's 4-8 is really kind of where the detail cost centers are for, they start for the water. We've got essentially water, and then sewer follows that. And then there's a separate cost center for the treatment plant. On the water side, there are five different J forms that have been prepared. And they, three of those are for commodities. There is a J form for an increase in electricity costs. Our contractual cost for electricity at our water facilities has increased thirty-five percent over the prior year. That's equivalent to about an increase of forty thousand dollars. And as I noted in one of the other cost centers earlier, with respect to paying for our own water and having a better accounting of that, there's an increase of about six thousand nine hundred dollars from twenty, twenty, twenty-five to twenty-four. The, the other items we've got in here, there's in the 531050 for asphalt patching. The, the budget proposed was increased by seventy-five hundred dollars for additional patching work. And again, this is kind of the coordination between our roadway maintenance program and water main replacement. There's some areas that we'll continue to kind of maintain pavement-wise in their current condition until we can get there with planned water main replacements. Under 536105, our property and liability insurance premiums have a fifteen percent increase for 2025. And this budget also anticipates a three and a half percent rate increase in water, the cost of water from the DuPage Water Commission for 2025, which equates to about four hundred and seven thousand dollars in this budget.
Okay. Alderman Jensen?
Page 4-8, line, or item 530230, baking expenses. Can you sort of explain what those are?
So the baking expenses comprise a lot of the credit card fees, banking fees, WaterSmart fees, anything that would be an expense to collect revenue for the, for the MUF. And it is allocated. So some of the costs are also borne in the general fund. But that, that has gone down. That's one of the, the benefits of the new accounting system is we were able to use a different processor, which has a much lower weight. So we have seen those costs decrease. And you'll see that in the general fund as well.
So for 2024, we had budgeted two hundred and forty grand. It's actually ending up around a hundred and thirty, but next year proposed it, proposed budget's two hundred and thirty grand for that, and then decreasing slightly from there. Is there a reason why we jump back up in significantly more than what we had this year, or?
Real quick. So one of those, and one of those is actually, as I look at it, was double counted in 2025. So one of the things we'd like to look at is to add lockbox services and electronic lockbox services. So that was twenty-one thousand dollars. It looks like it was counted twice in 2025. One of those should be in 2026. So it'd be a hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars for credit card fees, kind of the year-over-year comparison. And then the, the twenty-one thousand dollars for the lockbox and e-lockbox.
I guess, why is it only a hundred and thirty thousand dollars this year? Seems like an outlier.
I can get back to you on that one. I don't have that off the top of my head.
We got to circle back on that one. All right. Other questions on, actually, we're still, got more to go here, don't we?
Mike, should I continue into sewers? Okay.
Yeah. Do you want to do water and sewer separately, or? Okay, we're still on water then. You got a question on water. Alderman Erby?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. On page 4-8, we have laboratory services. If I can figure out what number it was. I was looking at it. So with the new, did you get, did you get it, Mayor?
531235.
Yeah, laboratory service. I think we're at twenty-five thousand. Does that sound right?
Right.
With the new lead program that's just came out, federal, we're going to have an increased amount of laboratory services for lead services at the laboratory. So we might have to, I think we do lead now once every three years, and this one is like once every...
Once, once every six months.
There you go. So should we allocate more, is the question. I, I hate to do that, but do we have enough in laboratory, is the question?
The answer is we'll probably, within the municipal utility fund budget, we'll probably have enough for 2025. And you're right that those costs are probably going to increase. We don't really know how much yet because, quite frankly, the, the laboratories, we don't, we don't have firm costs from them on what that's going to look like. So we're working on that. We're talking with our lab. And I anticipate that we'll probably have some increased lab fees. But I, I think probably within the fund, we'll, we'll be okay for this coming year. But it will affect things going forward.
Nothing alarming at this point?
Not yet, no.
Okay. Thank you.
Alderman Deuter?
Thank you, Mayor. The narrative for the MUF Fund at the beginning in the kind of the introductory section talks about one of the expectations for 2025 being to administer lead water service replacements. Probably not tonight, but maybe if you could write something up that just explains a little bit more about what those expectations are around lead service line replacements, what the implications are, both financially and from a timing perspective.
Can do. Yes. I, I can, I, just very, very briefly, a couple things just happened where, of course, this applies not just to Elmhurst, but to all water utilities that are out there. We were working under a plan of replacing lead service lines over a seventeen year period, under some state rules that applied in this case. There were just some new federal regulations that were published in the last few weeks that have apparently shortened that timeframe to ten years. And that would start in 2027. So we're, we're still kind of going through the details, the analysis of, of that rule and, and what that's going to mean. But it's, it's looking like that compliance period is shortening up dramatically.
And there's discussion, I think, either at the state or federal level of assistance in this area, if I'm correct?
There is. There are some federal dollars that are available. Half of those federal dollars are earmarked to go to disadvantaged communities. The, I guess, if you want to say the good news is that those, that definition of disadvantaged community is, is defined by census tract. So there, there may possibly be some census tracts that qualify under that. So that's definitely something we're going to be looking at.
All right. Anything else on water? Now to the other end sewer.
Oh, sorry.
Alderman Toledo?
Well, I would just like want, want to make a comment. I think another Alderman commented on the size of another department's, this is the biggest combined, the MUF is the biggest that we have in the whole city. And this is where water and sewer rates fund a lot of these operations. So I was very happy, and I just want the public to know, and the rest of my colleagues up here, what city, Director Coyle mentioned in the discussion last week about the budget, that, and we talked about it at Finance Committee tonight, that it's looking like we will not have to raise Elmhurst water and sewer rates this year. We may obtain a increase in the DuPage Water Commission rate for purchasing water. We'll have to keep an eye on what that comes out to be. But I think it's good because I know that water and sewer rates is a big conversation topic in the last year for residents because they were raised quite a bit. So keeping it stable this year will be a welcome piece of information. So thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Toledo. Director Bellicky?
Okay. Sanitary sewer. This, this cost center basically accounts for all of our, the operation and maintenance of the underground sewer collection system.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. Page 4-11 through 4-13. There are two- There are two J-forms that are highlighted with respect to this cost center. One is for natural gas. We expect about a $4,000 increase from 20,000 to 24,000 in 2025, as well as for postage rates. This is not so much a postage rate issue, but more so reflecting actual anticipated usage, increasing by $14,100 to $30,000. And some of this, we may be able to reduce. There is, one of these rules that we are working on complying with is publication of our water quality report. That's something that has been historically required to be published once a year, but there are new rules out there that are indicating that will be required two times a year going forward in 2025. So these postage rates are reflective of getting that information out to the community. We're also, at the same time, taking a look at electronic means to get it out to the community, so if there's a way that we can do that electronically, or we can do it in conjunction with some other publication that we're already sending, we will, but it's anticipation of that needing to be done. The other just thing I would note from the, on the capital outlay side, there are two, pardon me, there's three different KEB sheets that are, their details are included in these capital outlay numbers. The 57200 for lift station improvements, that includes, pardon me, I, KEB 69 for that, that one includes lift station repairs, as well as KEB 68 is lift station operator interface terminal upgrades. That will couple with some other SCADA work that we have going on in 2025. And then for account 57210, under sanitary sewers, that is kind of our main capital account for maintenance of our sanitary system. That includes everything from manhole rehabilitation, our sanitary system cleaning and lining and removal of dead laterals. So there's a lot of work that's included in that number, but that's kind of our main capital account, I would say, capital maintenance on the sanitary system.
All right, I have a question right off the bat. The lift station improvements, we had budgeted 4 million, we spent a million, and I'm not finding it in the KEB, what happened?
Oh, that was the, so we had, we bid out a sort of a grouping of projects this year that First Street Sanitary Sewer was part of, we also had the Atrium Force Main Project in there, and the North Industrial Force Main. The Atrium Force Main was substantially over budget, and so after conversation, there was a decision to withhold that project until a future time, so.
Very good. Other questions, then? Alderman Brennan.
So KEB 72 is Bundle 6 for phosphorus. For the longest time, it seems like, you know, the true cost of this initiative is unknown, because there's not a final standard or benchmark that we need to strive to hit. Has EPA established that benchmark, and is the 32 million that we have in there reflective of achieving that?
It's reflective of the best information that we have right now, and so we're operating under, the current expectation from the EPA is that we will be in compliance by 2031, which means that those improvements have to be complete. We have to really be in operation for a year before that, sort of that new standard comes into play. We're going to know more over the course of probably the next year, 18 months. We have dollars that are proposed in this budget, they're actually, they're in the next cost center under the water reclamation facility, but there are, there's about $4 million in there, and 2 million of those dollars are budgeted for the facility plan, which is that once every five-year kind of planning process that we have to go through, and $2 million is in there for Bundle 6 design. So again, those two things kind of go hand in hand, and as we go through that process, we'll have a better and better handle, but as of right now, that is the best information that we have in terms of timing and cost.
Follow up, Mayor? So 32 million's what we have in the future, right?
Yes.
Could it be less than that? Or is it more likely more than that? It's a big number.
It's, I would be surprised if it was less.
Okay.
But would love it, yes.
Wrong answer, but I get it. No, I.
Alderman Nardini.
Thank you. Can you elaborate a little bit on what you were just saying about the facilities plan and the beginning of Bundle 6, insofar as how it will inform the phosphor, the money that it will take to provide the infrastructure for the phosphorus?
So the facility plan document is, again, it's some, it's really, it's a planning process that as a sanitary, as a utility that's operating a treatment plant, we're required to go through by the EPA every five years, and it looks at our whole, we look at our whole system. So we don't just look at the treatment plant, but we look at what's coming in in the treatment plant, what's our infrastructure leading to the plant, and obviously, what is our plant operation, where do we need to get to in terms of our parameters that we have set by the EPA for nutrient removal and things like that? So that's like a, it's a very important planning process from an operations standpoint, as well as a capital standpoint, because it helps kind of inform where we're going to need to go. And then that leads into, obviously, the Bundle 6 design. That process is more honed in and more specific, obviously, to what those improvements under Bundle 6 are going to need to look like to be able to comply with what's in the facility plan.
I understand. It's safe to say that the Illinois EPA, in a few years, is going to ask of us to raise water rates substantially? Not water rates, the fees for this stormwater and phosphorus capture costs. Aren't they going to be part of, don't they fall within stormwater?
So, the EPA, I don't see them ever sort of having a role in dictating or asking the city directly to change water or sewer rates, but they have a very important sort of indirect role in terms of these, the compliance with these rules and regulations that as a utility, the city is mandated to follow. So, I guess that's.
Let me dumb my way through this. This is not an enterprise fund. This is, it is an enterprise fund. So, we can expect, I mean, come hell or high water, we will be on the hook for this, not because of any decisions we've made, but because the EPA is requiring a new level of capture.
That's correct, and I would just add, we've used, we've used the revolving loan fund to pay for a lot of these improvements, and a part of that, of using those, that program is demonstrating to the EPA, obviously, an ability to repay that loan. So that's where the rates also come into play.
Please say that again.
Alderman, I'll interject here. So when we did the last rate study, that City Council looked at at the beginning of this year, we did project out Bundle 5 and Bundle 6, and we are assuming that we would get low-interest IPA loans. We have procured those for Bundle 5. Bundle 6, we would have to go through that application process to get those low-interest loans. And then after that, we currently recover all of our debt service for the MUF through the CERC rate that's on the current utility bill. So the rate projections and the rate study did show that we would need to raise that CERC rate if the city continued its policy of using that rate to recover and pay for debt service associated with any projects that we would incur.
Five and six.
Five and six, yes.
So is it fair to say we budgeted for that in our rates?
We, in the long-term plan, so we only set the rates from year to year. So Bundle 5 and Bundle 6 are not in the current rates right now at all. So that would be something that would need to be addressed in future years, when that debt service would start being repaid. So for, we don't, with IPA low-interest loans, you don't start debt service repayment until either the project is substantially complete or complete, and then that's at the point that you would start repaying the debt service, and then we would look at the CERC rate and add that, adjust that rate accordingly.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Alderman Brennan.
I just have a comment. So, all joking aside, I think, you know, we're doing some, you know, pretty heavy lifting, you know, with rehabilitation of our, you know, infrastructure over there. And I've always been impressed with sort of the stepping stones that we approach that we've taken. You know, Bundle 5, you know, what we're doing there, I think we're anticipating and envisioning what needs to be done in Bundle 6. So, you know, I think you and your staff have done a great job, you know, with something that's super complex and very expensive, but I think you're managing that very, very well, so thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I think, any other discussion on this? All right, we went a bit over, but I think it was important to conclude that topic. We will go back, when we come back, on the Motor Fuel Tax Fund, and then March, City Manager, do you anticipate an adjustment, or we will continue to go through what you've identified already for the November 4 meeting?
We have scheduled already the museum, and as you know, the foundation likes to come in and make some comments, so they will be invited to that. We may start with the history museum, and then go back to MFT, and then continue the schedule from there.
Very good. All right, thank you all for your attention, for, did you say, a motion to adjourn, Alderman Brennan? Oh, you went in.
I was.
Oh, motion to adjourn by Alderman Brennan, second by Alderman Tulludo. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. We are adjourned, thank you.